The Open Meeting Law, General Law Chapter 30A Section 18. In the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Sturbridge Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's website at www.sturbridge.gov/town-administrator/pages/how-access-virtual-meeting. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen, enter or watch the meeting either online via the town's on-demand video broadcast, on cable television on Channel 191, or dial into the meeting at 774-304-1455. Enter 1428 for the meeting number and 12345 for the access code. This phone number is only active for the public during public meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post audio and/or video recordings, transcript, and other comprehensive record of the proceedings on the town's website as soon as possible after the meeting. First item on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes of April 13. Jean, we don't have any A and Rs, do we?
No, we do not.
Okay. So at 6:35, we'll have a public hearing for special permit and site plan approval for Noble Energy Real Estate Holdings. At 7:00 PM, we'll have a waiver of site plan request for 380 Main Street, a company called Wicked Licks. At 7:10, there'll be a waiver of site plan request for 371 Main Street for the Sawdust Coffee House. At 7:20, we have another waiver of site plan request for 559 Main Street, Altruis Brewing. Following that, we'll have the town planner update, an old and new business, and adjournment. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of April 13? If so, do we have any questions, comments, or changes? If none, can I have a motion to accept the minutes as submitted?
Second, Chris.
Second, Chris, great. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And Russ?
How about Steve?
Okay, Russ, thank you, and I will vote yes. Very good. Okay, we've got a few minutes, I guess, before 6:35. Do you want to start on your town planner update?
Yes, sure. So, as you know, this evening you have a proposal before you for Noble Energy Company, and that is currently home to interstate towing. So I wanted to let the board know that it appears that they may have found a new home, and that is at 150 Charlton Road, which is the last lot left in the industrial park across from Stop &amp; Shop. It's between the office building that was developed by Arland Tool and Sturbridge Antiques. So they are before the Conservation Commission now, and will eventually be filing a site plan approval with the planning board and design review approval. And then also Lucky Mart at 122 Main Street has been granted a special permit by the zoning board to relocate their gas canopy within five feet of the front setback. They had been required to remove their underground storage tanks some time ago and had just recently started filing the applications for approval to rebuild that site. So they are currently pending with the Conservation Commission and will be filing with the planning board shortly for that. And then, do you want me to finish, Charlie, or do you want to start the public hearing?
Okay, why don't we start the public hearing? I think it's 6:35. So Sue, do you want to read the public hearing notice?
Okay. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the planning board will hold a public hearing virtually on Tuesday, April 27, 2021, at 6:35 PM on the application of Noble Energy Real Estate Holdings LLC, 131 Buckingham Street, Suite 301, Hartford, Connecticut. The applicant requests a special permit and site plan approval pursuant to Chapter 11, 22, 24, and 25 of the zoning bylaw regarding the creation of two commercial properties. The applicant requests site plan approvals to allow for the redevelopment of the properties located at 195, 197, 201, and 201A Charlton Road that will be divided into Lot 1 and Lot 2. The applicant proposes to create an 8,437 square foot travel plaza consisting of a Noble Energy filling station, convenience store, with drive-through coffee sandwich shop, and Frisbee's ice cream takeout, and outdoor walk-up service window. The filling station will consist of 10 vehicle fueling islands, 10 electric vehicle charging stations, and four high-speed diesel fueling stations with overhead canopies and related site improvements on Lot 1, as shown on the plan submitted. Lot 2 will be developed in construction of a 16,640 square foot two-story electric vehicle discovery center, which will include a first floor not-for-profit electric vehicle display showroom and discovery learning center. The second floor will include 120-foot restaurant and bar, outdoor patio, and separate office space, as shown on the plan submitted. The applicant is also requesting a special permit pursuant to Chapter 22, Section 22.05.05 of the zoning bylaw regarding the erection and maintenance of signs in excess of what is specifically allowed in the bylaw. The additional or larger signs for the travel plaza include a 50-square-foot Noble Energy ID sign on the building, where the square footage permitted is 30 square feet, and eight 13.75 square foot logo signs are proposed on the gas canopies. Also proposed is a 65-foot multi-tenant sign where 50-square-foot multi-tenant sign is permitted. The additional or larger signs for the EV Discovery Center include two restaurant signs of 58 square foot each, EV Discovery sign number 1, 144 square foot, sponsorship sign number 1, 128 square foot, a building entrance sign of 31 square foot, a building directory sign of 48 square feet, sponsorship signage number 2 of 188 square feet, and the EV Discovery sign number 2 of 230 square foot. Permitted signs to the EV Discovery Center would be two wall signs per tenant at 30 square feet. The planning board is working under the guidance of Governor Baker's order of spending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law that stated earlier.
Well, Sue, thank you very much. That was very good, very detailed. Jean, do you want to give kind of an introduction and then introduce the proponents?
Yes, I will. So I really don't need to preview the project because it was all contained in the public hearing notice, so. We have received the application at the end of March. I did accept the application without the traffic study, which is something that I normally do not do, but I did because the project is so large, I wanted to be able to get it out to staff to begin their reviews. So once the traffic study was received, we did receive quotes for peer review, and Par Corporation will be the peer reviewer for this project. There's a site visit scheduled for Monday at 10:00 AM, and any staff members and/or board members are welcome to attend, and at that time, the engineering team will explain the overview onsite, show where things will be located, and show the access to the property. I don't have any staff review reports for you tonight, but I am recommending that after the hearing tonight, we continue this public hearing until May 25 at 6:35 PM, at which time we would expect to be able to have all of our staff reports and peer reviews completed. With us this evening, we have the applicant's project team. Michael Frisbee is the proponent, and he has with him this evening David Faist, his principal engineer, Joe Cohn, his landscape architect, Joseph DeLuca, one of his architects, Matt, I'm sorry, I never can remember your last name from Phase Zero Design because you don't have it up there. So Matt from Phase Zero Design is another project architect, and James Bernardino, I believe, is with VAI here this evening. So with that, I will turn it over, I think, to Mr. Frisbee for an introduction of the project, and then if David can let me know who would like to share the screen, I can give the permissions while Michael is speaking to the board. David, do you want to share your screen?
Yes, actually, the order will probably be, I'll share my screen first, followed by Joe Cohn, then Joe DeLuca, and then Matt Whitner.
All right, so I'll give it to you while Michael is speaking.
Great, well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. We're really excited to be here tonight. I think really, I feel really important with all the professionals with me tonight. I have a couple of architects, landscape architects, you know, building architects, and some local engineers that are really helpful to me in helping build the Noble program. So I'm glad they're all here tonight. We're happy to be presenting this evening and look forward to your feedback. So my name is Michael Frisbee, for the record. I am the owner of Noble Energy Real Estate Holdings and Noble Gas Inc. We are based in Hartford currently, but I'm hoping to move my offices to the EV Discovery Center sometime soon. So the principal program, as you see, is a travel plaza, but I really think it's the future of transportation, larger properties on busy roads that are designed, you know, thoughtfully about the future. And I'm really excited about electric vehicles. I think that's the wave of the future and where it's going. And we do have the gas component, you know, for the meantime, but we're designing our site to be able to allow for the DC fast chargers for electric vehicles, but also support whatever comes along in the future. And we'll be putting the infrastructure in to eventually hopefully take gas dispensers away and add more DC fast chargers, not only for cars, but also for trucks. That kind of design and thoughtful thinking is going into this design plan. With the EV Discovery Center, it truly is an educational facility. I'm excited about that. I'm partnering with Nichols College right down the road. I'm a Nichols alum, and really trying to create a pathway to management program with Nichols and their Nichols Consulting Group, where we're going to bring students in to not only work at the facility, but be a training center for them to learn how, you know, how I like to see the business go. But on the Discovery Center, we'd like to be able to provide an opportunity for folks in New England, and maybe even farther, to come to Sturbridge and learn all there is to know about electric vehicles and the like, but also use the building as a multifunctional building. You know, we'd like to have the students, you know, in local schools and culinary programs come into and work and run the restaurant and learn those skills, and whatever else we can do for the local community as well, use the drama studio, the drama, you know, theater to be able to do functions, have chamber commerce meetings, work hopefully cooperatively with the conference center in town, you know, for special events and things of that nature. So we're excited to present tonight. I'll let the experts do their work, but I'm here to answer any questions you may have. So thanks for having us.
Very good, thank you.
And good evening. Now, my name is David Faist. I'm the project civil engineer with CMG Engineering Services. We're right here in Sturbridge over on Hall Road. So this project's nice and convenient for us. It's right up at the end of the street. To give you a brief overview, the existing site, as you may all know, is actually made up of four separate properties right now, number 195, 197, 201, and 201A, and it totals about 7.3 acres total. Existing sites, you know, interstate towing occupies basically the right side of the property over here currently, and there's an abandoned restaurant, 197, and I guess there's a former hotel or motel that used to be occupied number 195. Currently, Noble Energy has a purchase and sales agreement on all four properties, and the intent is to basically demolish the existing buildings and construct their new project. And so to move to the proposed project, just to give you sort of an overview, the existing site will be divided into two separate properties. Basically, on the left, or it'd be, I guess, the eastern side of the property, will be the Noble Filling Station Convenience Store, which will have basically a fuel canopy with 20 standard vehicle fueling positions. Will also be unique, it'll have four high-speed diesel fueling locations on the east side of the site, and part of these, the intent also with the electric vehicle modifications in the coming years, is to hopefully, as part of the construction, will make it so they can be retrofitted potentially in the future for one or two potentially to be EV charging for larger vehicles as well. On the, basically, the opposite side of the site here, we have 10 electric vehicle fueling positions, which will be under a canopy, similar to like a standard vehicle fueling. Of that, the large majority will be the high-speed chargers with, I think, two standard chargers, just to hopefully accommodate the majority of electrical vehicles on the market today. The actual building itself is a little larger than a normal filling station, as it will house not only the convenience store and gas station, but it'll have, basically, the morning will be coffee and breakfast offerings with a drive-through window, combined with our deli's, deli, which will operate from noon through the evening hours, which will also share the same drive-through window, you know, at different times of the day. With that, we're providing ample parking for all those uses. In addition, on the right side of the building, will also be a Frisbee's Ice Cream offering, which will be, have a walk-up window and an outdoor patio. Mike already has, this is one of his own brands, there's already a Frisbee's Dairy Barn, several in Connecticut, and this is one that'll be combined as part of the convenience store filling station offering. With that, we provided an isolated drive-through lane to provide plenty of stacking for the cars, as well as, you know, vehicle delivery and loading areas at the rear, and will also have kept for the high-speed diesel fueling, a totally separate drive aisle for all the larger vehicles to drive around the outside perimeter of the facility and exit the site free from interacting with some of the onsite, the filling station traffic. The project main entrance will be here, sort of opposite where Cornerstone Bank is. As part of the project, Vanessa and Associates are not here this evening, they're the project traffic engineer. There is a proposed traffic light, which will be part of the project, so the main entrance will be shared by both the Noble Filling Station Convenience Store, as well as the EV Discovery Center. Move over to the western side of the site is where the EV Discovery Center will be located. On this side of the site, basically, as Mike described, will have the electric vehicle Discovery Center, which will also house a second-floor restaurant, indoor restaurant facility, as well as office space for both the Noble Filling Station, the EV Discovery Center, as well as the restaurant. We are providing around 79 paved parking spaces with additional overflow grass paver parking for seasonal overflow parking, to provide upwards of, I think, 134 total parking spaces for the site. With that, we've, again, Joe Cohn is with us tonight, he'll go over in a moment some of the landscaping features. We provided landscape, interior landscaping islands in several locations to help break up the parking and provide some, again, shade trees within the parking areas as well. Site drainage, I know the Par Corporation will be peer reviewing the drainage. Currently, the existing site is mostly paved. There's an existing drainage connection onto Charlton Road, Route 20, with, basically, there's an existing two-by-three culvert which flows underneath Charlton Road and connects, eventually discharges behind Cornerstone Bank. Initially, we, before we started the project, we met with Conservation, filed a request for determination to make sure there weren't any conservation issues related to our project, and we received a negative determination of applicability, as there are no onsite wetlands or any buffer zones which affect the project. We've designed the project so that there will be no increased offsite flow, but are providing full land use with high potential pollutant or stormwater treatment upgrades to include oil-water separation, deep-sump catch basins, as well as water quality units to make sure that we meet all of the current Massachusetts stormwater management standards. And with that, I guess, I guess probably best to turn it over to Joe Cohn, so he can give you a brief overview of the site landscaping design.
Okay, now, before we get to the landscaping, does any, we'd like to go through and ask any questions on this overview presentation we've heard of so far. Russ, do you have any comments or questions at this point yet?
I think I'll wait till the end, Charlie, because my questions may be answered. Thank you.
All right. All right, does anyone else have anything they'd like to bring up at this point before we move on to the landscape? Okay, great, I guess we'll move on to the landscape presentation.
Great, thank you. My name is Joe Cohen. I'm a licensed landscape architect based here in Sturbridge. So basically, the goal of the landscape plan in this situation was to add as many large deciduous trees adjacent to the parking area as possible. We want to reduce the heat island effect of the pavement, and we also want to break up the large areas, both visually and, you know, physically as well. So I selected the canopy trees, or the larger trees, based off of, you know, the canopy density. So the honey locusts, they offer more of a filtered light, so we use those intermittent in the parking areas. The red maples give a more denser shade, so we used those kind of as a juxtaposition in that space as well. And then, you know, those are supplemented with some smaller trees that have some visual interest, the paper bark maple brings the scale down a little bit and just kind of adds a little bit of variety. There was a lot of consideration made for seasonal interest with the trees as well, fall and early spring, as well as the winter with the, you know, the paper bark maple has an interesting bark that exfoliates. The beech tree is kind of a columnar, so that's, you know, a more unique tree. The conifers were chosen just mainly as screening. We have Sturbridge Meadows over there to the west, so we wanted to screen their views. Their views are going to vastly improve, but, you know, we'll help them out where we can. We had some screening to the north, to the south, excuse me, where, you know, where the site meets the forest. And then, to supplement the trees, we used some hardy native shrubs that add, you know, some seasonal interest, some fragrance, some colors, and they're low maintenance, don't require a lot of water, and particularly out front with the utility poles right there. We didn't want anything that grows up into it. We don't want to block views for people turning in and out, you know, safety is paramount here. And lastly, the rain garden space down front, I'm pretty excited about that. We have a planting palette of some hardy native perennials that will really create some biodiversity, so it's a really good pollinator selection, so, you know, they'll be able to tolerate the stormwater fluctuations, you know, some will have wet feet more than others. They're very adaptable, and, you know, it's a really good way to showcase some native New England perennials, so I think it's going to look really nice. So that was kind of, kind of the overview of the landscape there.
Thank you, Joe. And Mr. Chairman, one of the, the one waiver request that we are asking for is for, from the landscaping buffer at the front of the site, in front of where the Noble Filling Station is now. Currently, the existing site is paved right up to the property line. As part of our project, we're going to be expanding the landscape island into the site to provide an additional 12 feet of landscaping that's from the property line into our project, which we can landscape here. Existing, there's already grass, a five-foot sidewalk, and some additional grass up to the edge of the roadway. As that, from the edge of the roadway to where we're proposing our onsite curbing, we're providing about 28 to 38 feet of grass landscaping in the sidewalk in between our site and the roadway. The town bylaw requires a 25-foot landscaped setback, which goes, I believe, from the right-of-way line into the site, so that's the, I wanted to point out, that's the one waiver request we are asking for as part of the project, and we will be improving the existing condition, which is actually paved, I believe, right up to that property line.
Good, thank you.
And if there's no questions, I guess the next, I probably want to turn it over to Joe DeLuca, the architect for Noble Energy's Filling Station, for his presentation of the building.
Evening, everybody. My name is Joe DeLuca. I am the registered architect for the travel plaza. I've pretty thoroughly went over the basic premise of the building. I'll just walk you briefly through the inside. The project consists of three quick-serve restaurants, a coffee program, a deli, which both share the drive-through window on this side of the building, common seating area, facilities for travelers, the convenience store, and what really is the most important part of the entire project, the ice cream area over here. This has a seasonal order area that can be enclosed in inclement weather and opened up in good weather. On the right-hand side of the building, there's also outdoor seating, the patio, that was on the site plan, and there's also a counter, a seasonal counter, that can be opened up in good weather. The building's 8,437 square feet. It is 34'8" high. We're seeing it right now as stick-built. The materials on the outside, cultured stone veneer base, cementitious siding, prefinished, durable PVC base trim, and an architectural 30- or 50-year shingle on the roof. You can see on this side where the patio would be, that will be enclosed in a fence bordered with landscaping, so it provides some measure of safety for children from the parking lot. The drive-through side of the building, again, it's two concepts, one drive-through. They'll be sharing this window on this side of the building. Patio side, there is the open area order window, the seasonal counter, and then graphic, which will be designed by a local artist representing the town of Sturbridge, that offers patients an opportunity to take a picture in front and remember that they had the best ice cream in Sturbridge right here. Back of the building is a very utilitarian, but we've paid some attention to screening of all the air handlers and condensers. They're cut into the roof and shielded from view. The fuel dispensers are all a similar style of canopy, large steel green columns, a white aluminum fascia with the noble colors, and the same architectural roofing shingle in a mansard pattern to screen the fire suppression equipment on the roof. Each one of these will have a Noble logo, all signage on both the building, the canopies, and even the pylon, or externally illuminated channel liners. As David had mentioned, we are asking for some relief on the signage. All the sizes are detailed in the drawings that were submitted. All the sizes are detailed in the drawings that were submitted. All the canopies share the same basic design in terms of height. The EV canopy is a little bit deeper and centrally supported, but essentially, again, it's the same look, same materials, same colors, and the roofing material ties back to the primary Travel Plaza building. The sign-out on Charlton Road, a multi-tenant sign that encompasses both the gas pricing and the co-brands. All these brands, in case you didn't hear David, are controlled by the owner, Mr. Frisbee. So he has ultimate say over how big these graphics are, what they look like, and we don't, we don't expect any pushback insofar as the space allowed or the colors that are used here from anyone, anyone else outside of the project. The last, well, this sheet here details all the signage, and you can see very clearly all the colors, the sizes, the square footages we're asking for, in a little more detail. And the last sheet is just a little bit more realistic rendering of what the plaza will look like from Charlton Road as viewed from both corners. We really are excited about the project overall, and we think that this is going to be substantial improvement over what people traditionally think of when they think of a travel plaza. There's a lot of energy, there's been a lot of attention to detail, we've tried to make it visually interesting and provide some quality indoor and outdoor space for patrons. If anyone has any questions, be happy to address them.
Does anyone have any questions at this time, or would you like to see the next part of the presentation? All set for now?
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to Matt now, Dave?
Yep, I'd like to interest Matt Whitmer with Phase Zero Design to present the EV Discovery Building.
Thanks, Dave. Let's see here. Starts sharing my, okay, let's see. All right, so I think you can share, I think your folks now can see my screen. For the record, I'm Matt Whitmer with Phase Zero Design Architects, and we're the architect for the Electric Vehicle Discovery Center, kind of a unique building in and of itself with a unique purpose. So I'd like to take a few minutes to just walk you through this. I have the first floor plan here. As was mentioned earlier, it's a 16,640 square foot, two-story building, and the building itself is basically housing three components. The Electric Vehicle Discovery Center, which is a not-for-profit, educationally-focused, interactive center to show electric vehicles and electric components as the technology moves forward. We'll also have a second-floor for-profit restaurant, which Mr. Frisbee mentioned, will have a teaching kitchen, a bar area, and some outdoor dining, I'll show you that, as well as offices and a conference space, a small conference area for the Noble Corporation. So the ground floor, and just to orient yourself, the plan here is on the right side, and my cursor right now is over the EV Discovery Center. This is the parking lot area here with the main entrance, and then this is Charlton Road, and this area of the building here facing Charlton Road, which I'll walk you through. The main entrance is to have a large, interactive lobby area with a grand stair. Certainly will be elevators, and then on either side are the EV display areas, if you will, the enclosed display areas. We do have a couple of large sliding doors, they'll look like a storefront system when closed, but when they open, they allow us to bring vehicles into the space. This can also bring vehicles into the interactive lobbies. We have a fair amount of glass here, which I'll show you, on the outside of the building facing Charlton, where the side of the building will be easily seen as one drives by. The idea is that these areas are going to display a broad range of electric products. Certainly, we're looking at electric vehicles, but also it could be taxis or trucks, it could be segways, electric bicycles, motorcycles, racing cars, batteries and charging systems, as well as maybe electric recreational vehicles such as boats and snowmobiles. We do have some back-of-house areas here as well, which will support the activities of the Discovery Center, and then there is a storage area at the upper end of the building with some overhead doors, which is really this area back here on the site, which is hidden from view, both from the parking field as well as from the road itself. Moving on to the second floor, on the left side of the building, coming up through the lobby up the grand stairs, we have this restaurant. Restaurant will have a large teaching kitchen, we're imagining an open kitchen concept where a lot of the, you know, the smells, the pop, the sizzle of the food as it's being prepared, you know, is front and center, so that the table seating around this area can all see what's going on. The whole idea of, you know, fresh and cooking is what the intention is here, to really put cooking front and center. There is a bar area that will be both interior and outside, onto this area here that has this pattern, which is an outdoor dining, covers part of the lobby area for the bar, kind of bistro seating, as well as restaurant seating around here in this area, which wraps around with views of the, you know, the woodlands beyond, as well as out to Charlton Road. There's a small conference room here to support the EV, as well as maybe some of the teaching functions, to act as a classroom space for the restaurant, some restroom and back-of-house facilities, and then the offices that Mr. Frisbee mentioned for Noble. I have the elevations for you folks. It's a little bit of a unique building, obviously, housing a fairly unique concept, so we felt it appropriate to, you know, let the building be a bit of a teaching tool, if you will, and be reflective of what's going on inside, much like the buildings of Old Sturbridge Village are certainly, you know, maintaining that educational concept of the colonial era. You know, we're looking for our building here to present some of the uniqueness of electric power, technology, and, you know, and certainly change. So we're looking at mostly a metal panel facade, I'll show you some samples of that in our presentation, and then a fair amount of glass that will provide, you know, views into the space, as well as view from the restaurant out. We do have a deck area here, this is the area that you can see with the deck that faces Charlton Road. The back of this building is actually angled, so this runs along the property line and actually runs against an existing tree buffer, which I'll show you folks. This is the side view here, if you will, as you come into the parking lot. You can see the large area of the building with the restaurant and the deck here. The rest of this building is moving backward at an angle, and I'll show you that in a 3D view. We do have an access up to the restaurant area, the bar area from the outside, as well as one from the inside through the lobby. These are some extra-nex that show you how the building is broken up a little bit. This is the main entrance that I showed you facing the parking lot. We've got some opportunity for some signage for the Discovery Center, as well as for sponsors, some signage for the restaurant. The lobby itself is set back on the second floor, providing this outdoor bistro area, and then some of the dining tables here along the deck. Space here is the conference room that I had mentioned, or the teaching classroom, the offices on the second floor, and then, of course, the lower level is devoted to the Discovery Center. I'll go back, and this just gives you a little bit more of a 3D axiometric of how the building is laid out. Most of our rooftop equipment for the kitchen area is actually going to be hidden by this block here, and then depending on how we heat and cool this building, there probably won't be much else on the roof. We are looking at other, you know, systems and means of heating this building, so, you know, if there is some rooftop units, they're certainly going to be, going to be hidden probably in the back area of this building, and we're imagining if that happens, there'd certainly be some screening that addresses that. These are some of the metal panels that we're using, we have a light aluminum metal panel, we have a darker metal panel to provide some contrast. Our storefront is in a darker gray, as you can see here. Since the building is close to and part of this development with the Frisbee's Travel Center, we look to bring some of that green coloring into this building, you know, we think that's appropriate, it helps to knit the two projects together, but also allows for some differentiation between both buildings. And then finally, we have this spore aluminum wood grain siding that we've used on quite a few buildings, has a really nice look to it without having to cut down trees and, you know, and certainly apply wood to the structure, very durable, very long-lasting, but also provides a lot of warmth and a nice juxtaposition against some of, you know, what we have here with the metal panels and the glazing. This is a 3D view from the parking area, again, the main entrance, you know, the lobby setback, the EV Discovery Center on the ground floor, the restaurant, the deck, and how that wraps around, the classroom, conference room, and then the Noble offices. We do have some hardscape over on this side, which we're imagining we will have some probably parking for electric vehicles, so they could be seen from the road, something outside of the building itself, and this is that rain garden here that Joe Cohen had mentioned as well, along the front of the building and Charlton Road, just out of view right here. And then the view from Charlton Road, well, it is a fairly large building, the way it's sited, a lot of the bulk of the building actually is going back along the property line at this angle. There is a pretty good-sized, well-established buffer right now, from the residential development that's our neighbor, so that will also help to block this. So the actual facade that you see from Charlton Road is actually quite, quite small in comparison. We do have this block here of the EV Discovery Center, which acts as signage for this destination, some coloring, some patterning here to break it up, those wood tones wrapping around, and then the glazing for the EV Center facing the street, as we had talked about, and some glazing up above for the restaurant. And I believe that completes my presentation. We had spoken a little bit, I will say, about the signage, and I will let you know, because we don't have the sponsors already identified, it's a little bit difficult to talk about signage. We did take a stab at the areas that were noted, but that might be something that, you know, with your guidance, we look to table to a later date when those sponsors become more known, that restaurant is branded, and, you know, we would then come back to you and have further discussions on signage as it pertains to this building.
Is that it now for the presentation, or?
I believe so, unless, you know, Frisbee would like to add anything, or David?
I'd just like to say thank you to all the presenters, you did a great job, and, you know, we're opening up to comments, questions, concerns, things of that nature, and make it corroborative.
Gene, I understand that the Design Review Committee is in the process of reviewing the design?
Yes, so the Design Review Committee has met with the applicant design team on two occasions, and actually are at the point where they are comfortable to approve the building designs. They've asked for material samples to be shipped to the office, and those have not yet arrived, but what the Design Review Committee had asked initially, was there some way to make the two buildings, I'll say, kind of speak to each other? They felt the initial design, they were just kind of two buildings that really didn't seem to relate to one another, so they've brought in some of the coloring and design elements from the Travel Center into the Discovery Center, and the Design Review Committee was very happy with that. The Design Review Committee has approved the designs for all of the signage for the Travel Plaza, and has tabled the signage for the EV Discovery Center, because as Matt said, we don't really know what that will look like at this point, so the planning board will probably need to do the same, we'll give that some more time, maybe in another month, we might know something more, and if not, at the end of this process, probably just table that. The Design Review Committee had also asked that Mr. Cohen look at the backside of the building, so the parking lot view that you're looking at here, and wondered if they could perhaps add some planters to soften the entrance, and I know Joe will be working on that. And the Design Review Committee will meet, I'm expecting, one more time with the applicant, and then everything should be approved through that process.
Great, very good. Okay, so we're obviously in a very preliminary part of this to have this overview, but I thought it'd be a good opportunity for any member of the planning board, if you have any questions or concerns, this would be a good time to bring them up so that they can be considered as we move forward. Russ, do you have anything you'd like to bring up at this point?
I got several things, Charlie.
Sure, go ahead.
I'll just go down the list, I'm looking at the C-Gas 2.0, and I don't see, with all the parking and everything, I don't see anything, no storage. There's a lot of pavement, and I don't see anything for snow storage, unless I'm missing it. I don't know if you want to take everything one at a time?
Would it be possible here, so I can share my screen, Gene?
Yes.
To put up that draw?
Yep.
And again, for snow storage, we can make sure some of those areas are more properly labeled. We are providing several, and I believe the town requires minimum 10-foot landscape islands surrounding the interior of the property, we do have several areas around the perimeter, we do have some area you can see snow storage labeled in the back here, but again, snow storage areas within the landscape islands and stuff, we can, again, label some of those areas to make it more clear.
Okay, but you're comfortable that you provided for adequate snow storage?
Yes, I believe, given we have areas, multiple areas to push snow, on the EV side, we have sort of the seasonal parking area here, which would be grass pavers, as well as some of the landscape islands, I do believe we have adequate storage.
Okay. Russ, you have another one?
Are there any generators proposed for the building, emergency backup generators?
Yes, there are, there'll be a, for the Noble side, there'll be an emergency generator located at the rear of the facility here, along with some transformer units for the building, and there will also, most likely, we don't have it located yet, but most likely a generator also for the EV Discovery Building.
I would caution you on that one, next to the residential area on that side for the EV building, you know, on the placement of that generator, so the noise doesn't interfere with them. Department buildings that are over there on that side?
Yep, that makes sense. Yep, that makes sense.
Um, is this project, um, proposed to be phased, or is this gonna be all done at once?
We're, we're planning to do it all at once.
Okay, and, um, our elementary school uses rainwater to flush the toilet, and I see this, especially the Travel Center, the high water use. Was that, um, so we use the rainwater off of the roof of the elementary school? And I was wondering if anything like that has been looked into for, uh, this facility to kind of save on our, uh, limited drinking water supply for the town?
Um, at this stage, that has not been looked into, however, it's definitely something that could be considered. Um, however, I know the store itself will definitely have to use all the low water usage fixtures, you know, to comply with some of the newer standards, um, to make sure that it, you know, meets all the current, um, you know, standards related to that. Um, it's something we could explore. It's not something, I don't know if Joe DeLuca, uh, has any input, but I've not seen that in a commercial building yet, um, in my experience over the past 30 years.
It, it is a bit difficult, uh, with a building of this size to pull that much water in to, to use for, uh, for toilets that, that are frequently used in a Travel Plaza, they're, they're, they are generally, uh, used extensively. Um, but we can certainly look into rainwater retention, uh, for aspects of the project.
Like I said, our elementary school, 900 student elementary school, good sized building, and, um, they have a, a system like that.
Right.
To flush the, uh, the toilet water. Oh, just a, just a thought.
Sure, sure.
Obviously, though, the Travel Center will be a high use for the, even though you're gonna have, uh, low, low flush, et cetera, et cetera, maybe something to look at.
Certainly.
And the last thing I've got is, um, I, I know you're looking at a traffic signal for the west end of the facility, but then you get the fuel island on the east end of the facility with an exit, and my, my concern is, the trucks coming out there and avoiding the traffic signal because they can't get down to it, and making a left-hand turn coming out of the center and defeating the purpose of the, of the traffic light. Uh, I was wondering if you could comment on that?
Um, at this stage, um, I know Vanessa Associates is our traffic engineer. I'll bring that question to their attention, and they'll be present at the next meeting. Um, they'd be better equipped to address that question.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if that should be a right turn only coming out on that east end of the exit?
Yeah, that I'm not sure. The only thing I do know is with the traffic light, does tend to create gaps. They'll have better information, I think, to support. I do believe it's proposed as a full, so, you know, full service, curb cut, uh, exit only, of course, but, um, but I'll make sure that they are able to respond to that question for you.
Thank you, that's all I got, Charlie, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Russ. Jeff, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Okay, great. Mike?
Yeah, I guess, uh, you know, I'm obviously gonna wanna take a look at the traffic stuff like everybody else, but I'm just trying to look at the parking on the Travel Center, and just also the flow of everything, and it just seems like, obviously, there could be a lot of activity happening here in, in multiple different directions, whether it's the drive-through, or the EV canopy, or the fuel canopy, and folks wanting to visit the ice cream shop, and so I'm just wondering, I don't know, Gene, is, do you have an opinion on, um, is this sufficient parking for the Travel Plaza, and also the flow of everything just seems like it could get very chaotic?
So, so I guess the quick answer is the parking does meet the zoning requirements. The internal flow and pedestrian, for pedestrian and vehicles will be something that we'll be looking at during the staff review and the peer review, so we'll be better able to answer that at our next meeting, or with the reports that the board will receive prior to the meeting. But you're right, there's a lot of activity on site. I mean, so far, from the initial review that I've begun, it, it does seem like there are crosswalks in adequate locations and things of that nature, but we'll certainly be taking a really hard look at that as we review this project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's all I had, Charlie. Thank you very much. Dane?
I know we said that that will be at the next meeting, but I was curious if there was a status of DOT yet, have you talked to them?
Um, yes. Vanessa's made initial contact with MassDOT, and as part of the process, um, this project will also require a MIPA permit, um, as well, um, because it exceeds the traffic threshold for that. So as part of the process, um, DOT is involved with the, um, upgrades that Vanessa will be proposing with the traffic light, and they are aware of this project.
And they haven't immediately said no way? Are you gonna get a signal here, they're at least talking to you?
Correct, yes.
Okay, good enough. Um, the grass pavers off to the back right, it sounds like those are for periodic, um, peaks of parking. Is that anticipated, or is it more in case we need overflow parking?
Um, sort of a combination of both. Again, the EV Discovery Center's sort of a newer, newer concept, um, so the idea is number one, we need the, the parking to meet the, the zoning requirement, I believe it's 82 spaces based on the use of the building. We have 79 paved spaces, um, for the main parking area, and with the grass pavers, it gives us an extra 64 for 134 total. So if there are, is a special event or something else, they'll have some additional parking spaces. So it's more just to provide a little bit of extra, you know, breathing room for parking, but still provide, but it's not something that's anticipated to be all, an all-the-time event.
Understood. In that vein, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but I personally am comfortable with banking spaces until we know more about the programming of the events in the space, if they're not gonna be used, if the event space is more speculative or theoretical and there's no programming at this time. I personally be comfortable leaving those as undeveloped area to be improved in the future, so that nobody goes through the hassle of installing a bunch of pervious pavers that never see usage. That said, this being a Travel Center, you may actually need the additional parking spaces, so that's just my thought. But I am curious, at the back right corner, how the parking is separated from the building, why that pervious parking spaces are a completed spot in that little corner? What's going on there?
Um, part of that, that's a good point, as further discussions as we're, you know, as we're going through the project, most likely this will be paved, um, as part of the development of the EV Discovery Center, now with the restaurant, um, portion of it. Some deliveries and other, um, access will be needed in this corner, so I believe we'll most likely revise a small portion of this to be paved here, and then, as you, about here where my cursor is, will probably be the defining line between the paved and the pervious paver area.
Gotcha. I noticed that, um, on the other end of the pervious pavement area is near the transformer, which to Charlie's point, I think would be a, the perfect spot for the generator, very far away from the residential and already have the electric plumbing in line there. Um, there's no access, there's dead-end parking there. I know you would lose a few parking spaces to punch an access through, um, but if you could keep the parking count somehow, and provide that full circus, uh, full circulation, I think that would be great to Mike's earlier point. Other than that, I think that the way that these drive lanes align nicely across the busier center drive aisle, um, with controlled stops, is absolutely perfect, and I don't, I'm not super concerned about having a lot of uses here. But to the point that there's two uses, I notice we're creating two new properties with a property line that goes right down the middle of the access, so I assume there'll be access easements shared from both properties, but I'm curious what the numbers of these properties will be, if we're starting with four properties?
Um, more than likely, I just, not knowing, I know that the numbering system usually is done, I think, through the assessor's office, but, um, existing one, number 195 is over on this side of the property, and I believe that the interstate towing is number 201, so that
Gotcha.
Basically, that 197 property would be the one that would sort of disappear, I guess.
Right, and then to Russ's point about phasing, I know we said it was gonna be one phase. The EV Discovery Zone sounds like a large investment with, um, probably fewer potential solutions to questions than the left side, which seems more likely to happen sooner to me. Is there a potential that this proceeds and we end up with a left-sided development? And if that happens, what would the right side of the development look like?
Uh, and I guess I'd direct that question to Mike, um, he's probably best to answer that.
Well, I, I appreciate that comment. Uh, the, the plan is not to, uh, to just build the Travel Plaza without the EV Discovery Center. Um, I'm, I'm all in on the EV Discovery Center with regard to the programming and things that we're working on currently, um, and, um, you know, so, I, I don't think that way. So, um, I guess if something were to happen, it's, you know, I don't want it done, if we have to come back for second approval, but that's not the intent.
Good, thank you.
That's great. Um, is there any consideration for solar panels on all these buffers, considering the EV time?
We, we are taking that into consideration now, and that was one of the, the comments that came from the, the DRC meeting as well, um, and, as well as working with MIPA, uh, they were asking about that, and, uh, we're, we're, we're looking into that, yeah.
Nice. Um, the EV display area up in the front there, um, seems a bit prominent to my eye. I'm not sure that car dealerships are allowed in this zone, and I know that this is not a dealership, it's an education center, but with the large amount of glass in the front corner of that building, which could showcase these vehicles, I'm not sure I personally like the idea of having a few electric vehicles kind of hanging out there, but that's more a comment than anything you can address. Um, beyond that, I was curious if you have any progress with the nonprofit programming you said you were gonna have in that center, or is Noble Energy running that, or is that space that you're gonna make available for somebody else?
Up, so, uh, so let's talk about the programming. So, um, when we, when we combine the last one and split them into two, I will still be the owner of both properties, uh, so the Noble Energy Real Estate will be the owner. Um, I am creating a nonprofit for myself to be able to program and run the EV Discovery Center as well as the, uh, the other educational pieces of, of the, of the building, even though I will own it in a separate entity that owns the real estate. That answer your question?
It does, yeah, it sounds like you are gonna actually control the company that's operating the nonprofit space, which is, that, that does answer my question, thank you. Um, and, yeah, it goes around my question, thank you, Charlie.
Okay, thank you, Dane. Chris?
Uh, no, I didn't have any questions.
All right, great, thank you. Sue?
Um, well, the safety for the outdoor seating, um, we would need to make sure that we put up those, um, concrete pillars to protect those seating, seated out there, from the parking, from the cars active in the parking lot. For one, that's just an update. Uh, I wondered about ADA parking, because it didn't seem like there's any parking near the building itself, so I wondered what was being done about that.
Um, with, with the ADA accessible parking, um, currently we have, basically on the Noble Energy side, you know, the spaces are located here where there's access to the patio, the ice cream, and the entrance to the building, so they're sort of be within this walkway, the main entrance walkway to the site, and that all complies with, you know, the standard, uh, based on the number of parking spaces. On the EV Discovery Center side, um, so, we looked at a couple of different ways and ended up, uh, basically go with the shortest distance with the main entrance to the Discovery Center being here, ended up with the three spaces located here with a walkway where there's, uh, in this particular area, won't be any, um, hidden parking in front of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you. Sue, anything else?
The ice cream, where you sit outside with the black wrought iron fence around for safety, the, the, um, boustiers, I believe they're called?
Correct.
To protect those seated at the, um, ground level?
The outdoor patio has fencing on all sides.
Correct, but
Yeah.
Is there anything protecting the fencing? Because fencing can come down with a car really easy.
Well, you had mentioned you, even, this might be a traffic, uh...
Oh, yeah, and that's definitely something, we can add some bollards, I know, similar to a lot of, like, other
Yeah, that's
You'll see, we can definitely provide those to protect the seating area.
Yes, that, that was just a thought, that you might wanna do that.
So one of the, one of the, one of the things we may consider is the, in lieu of the fencing, we may put a, a stone wall, you know, with some, with some, uh, concrete reinforcement, that would look nice, but also, you know, would look like, um, for lack of better terms, a couple of farms that has bollards every four feet, you know, I'd rather have a more aesthetically pleasing thing that's built right in than that, you know, as those bollards, so we, I, I consider looking at that alternate, at that, uh, you know, please, or...
Good.
Yeah, that's just a thought. When you show the landscaping, the green area that was noted on the landscaping, um, map, yes, is that grass?
Um, the majority of the green area that's for the interior, yes. There is, just on the outside, there's some existing trees in between these properties that extend a little bit onto ours, and again, over on, on this side, there's also some existing trees that would be undisturbed, um, but the majority of the green area would be grass, yes.
That you'll be planting? That'll be new?
Um, correct, you have to hold, pretty much the existing site, I know will have to be regraded and entirely re-landscaped.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Sue?
Um, I'm looking. Dumpsters, um, were they located and are they screened in?
Uh, yes, we have, for each building has our own set of dumpsters. For the convenience store, they're located over here, in the back corner, um, within the loading area for the back of the building, um, so there's adequate, they'll be provided with fenced screening. Um, for the EV Discovery Center, similarly, they'll be screened and located in the back corner of the property.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that then, Sue?
That's it, Charlie.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't have any questions, uh, good presentation. Gene, you wanna see if we have any members of the public who would like to comment?
Yeah.
Is there anyone on the public line that has any comments about, um, 195, 197, 201, and 201A Charlton Road, Noble Energy?
There's no one on the line, Charlie.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I think we, um, now need a motion then to continue the public hearing until May 25th, and Gene, you decided you'd like to have it at 6:40?
6:40.
Okay, so may?
Okay, so do we have a motion to that effect? Second, Chris? Okay, uh, Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good, thank you all very much, looks like a great project, uh, we look forward to continuing the review.
Great, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, you too. Okay, uh, that's just gonna be, I'm glad that we have a waiver of site plan for 380 Main Street Wicked Licks?
Yes, I'm just gonna have Janaye be the presenter. All righty. So, I saw Lynn Cormier on the line. She just left. She, apparently Lynn got tossed out of the meeting. She's been on the whole night, too. I don't know what
Oh.
just happened.
Well, do, do you wanna give us an overview, or, while we're waiting, or do you wanna go to the next one?
Um, whatever you prefer. Whatever you prefer. Not sure if Pete Champagne is on the line.
I'm here.
Pete, do you want to go to Sawdust while we give Lynn time to get back on?
Okay, that sounds good, sure, let's do that.
All right.
So then this would be waiver of site plan request for 371 Main Street Sawdust Coffee House?
Yes. So as the board is aware, COVID created some challenges for restaurants and food services. And the governor's order allowed for certain approvals to take place without going through the planning board or, for instance, the zoning board of appeals or design review committee or things like that. And this was all to encourage restaurants to create outdoor dining spaces for their patrons. So during this process, Pete Champagne created, actually, a beautiful outdoor patio. We, there were photographs in your packet. And this has been well-used, there are 24 seats available there. So Pete's total capacity for seating is 74 seats. So we've discussed this and he has agreed that he will not have more than 74 seats. So for instance, during the spring, summer, and fall season when he's using the patio and he can fit 24 seats out on the patio, he'll remove seating from inside the restaurant so that he never exceeds that 74-seat total. And as you are aware, Old Sturbridge Village was looking at potentially trying to create some additional parking behind the Thai place. And actually, Pete has had some conversations with the village of potentially having employees park on village property. So if anything like that changes in the future and he's able to add additional seating, he would need to come back to the board for your approval. So this evening, I would recommend that the board grant the waiver of site plan to allow the outdoor seating on the patio to be used as permanent seasonal seating with a condition that no more than 75 seats be used at any time unless additional parking could be created or leased from a neighboring property owner. And of course, the applicant would need to return to the board for approval for any additional parking increase in capacity. And also, we received an email yesterday from the fire department and they're requesting that before he put his outdoor heaters out for the fall season that he obtain any necessary approvals from the fire department. So that's an overview of the request and Pete is on the line if anyone has any questions for him.
Very good, thank you very much Pete. Does anyone have any questions regarding this waiver request? If not, can we have a motion to the extent of what Jean said to grant this waiver?
I'll move Russell.
Hey Russell?
What seconded?
Okay, you got that Janaye?
No. We didn't get that Charlie, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, so who made, Russell made the motion?
That's what I had.
And who seconded it?
Jane.
Oh, Jane.
Jane. All right Jane, thank you, very good. Okay. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jane?
Get it.
Mike?
Yes.
Yep. Russ?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good, Pete, thank you very much.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good night.
All right.
And Lynn?
No, I think the waiver of site plan request for 380 Main Street Wicked Licks?
Yes. So Lynn is back with us and.
Yes, I'm sorry, I had technical difficulties.
That's okay. So I'll give you an overview of the project and then Lynn can explain in detail her operation. So this is pretty exciting because this is the former travel cent, or visitor information center, excuse me, in the Chamber of Commerce offices that have been empty for some time now. So Old Sturbridge Village has actually sold this property to the Cormier family and Lynn is proposing to operate an ice cream shop on the premises. So this will, I'll let her explain the operation, but there will be no seating inside, all the seating will be outside. You'll see that Lynn has maximized the use of picnic tables so that she has seating that would require all of the parking on site. What she plans to do is watch this over the season and see if she really needs all of this seating or if perhaps she could lease some of the space to a different tenant, in which case she would come back to the board for additional approvals. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lynn to talk a little bit about her operation and what she plans to offer on the property.
Okay, so do you have also a picture of, can you hear me because I'm frozen?
Yes, we can hear you Lynn.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, so this is where the current, or where the ramp comes up. So basically what it's going to do is you're going to walk in the door, this will be the serving area for ice cream. You'll come in the door, you can order ice cream, and then go out the front door to the seating area. So it's just kind of a walkthrough basis, there'll be no indoor tables or anything like that. I'm putting in a prep kitchen that, that has, you know, a three-basin sink and a handwashing sink. This will be the prep area here. And then at the bottom, well then there's the current location of the bathroom is located next to that. And then next to this area is the serving area where there'll be two dipping cabinets. Well, actually, three dipping cabinets there that will hold all the ice cream, counter space for drinks, et cetera. And then you can exit through the front door, so the traffic will flow quite easily. And then outside, because of the parking I have, I'd be allowed, was it 36 I believe?
36, yes Lynn, 36.
Yeah, seating area. So underneath where the old, it's kind of like where an old bus stop, I think it was, it's got shelter. There'll be two six-seat seated picnic tables there. And then distributed out in front of the building will be five, four-seating round kind of picnic tables. And then of course, there'll be landscaping in front of the building on the side and by the rocks here. And then we have the, we have handicap parking, we have a couple parking spots here, and then parking all along here. Oh, that's right, I'm not directing it, so thank you for following along with that. Um, yep, the ice cream is a super premium ice cream. It will be called Licks Unlimited, so, I mean, Licks, Wicked Licks, sorry. I refer to my father's ice cream store in Minnesota, so I'm familiar with the ice cream business. His store was called Licks Unlimited, that's why I said that. So it's Wicked Licks, sorry. Anything else I can add? The basic inside of the building is basically remaining the same.
Is Charlie frozen? Charlie? Charlie's frozen.
Uh-oh. I've been there.
There he is.
I'm sure he is.
Hi Charlie, we're all set, so you froze up on us for a minute there. So I don't know if anyone has any questions, but I would recommend that the board grant the waiver of site plan to allow the operation of an ice cream shop on the premises with the following conditions. One, all state and local zoning bylaws and building codes shall be adhered to. Two, all necessary permits shall be obtained prior to opening. And three, the parking lot shall be striped to delineate the parking. Okay.
Okay, that looks good. Can, have you got a motion?
I've got a couple of questions Sally.
Oh, sure, go ahead Russ.
Um, will you be open at night during dark hours?
Can you, can you hear me because I'm frozen again? I'm not sure if you can hear me.
I can hear you.
Okay, um, I was going to be open till eight o'clock at night, but I am opening, you know, I am willing to open up later if need be.
Well, the reason for my question is I don't believe there's any lighting in the parking lot. There's none depicted and I don't recall seeing any. And if you're going to be open at night, I think we should have some lighting there.
Oh, of course.
And my next point is we usually found upon floodlights. We usually recommend downlighting so it doesn't broadcast into the neighbor's property. Not that you have many neighbors, but we don't usually typically use floodlighting anymore. So I'm not sure if anybody else has any comments on that. A floodlight and my only concern with that is the light shining into the traffic area into the roadway and stuff like that.
Right.
But if you are going to be open at night.
Yeah, right now I'm, sorry. Right now I'm not planning on being open, well, actually till eight o'clock. I would probably have to do something for lighting, you know, when the time changes.
Right.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Is there existing lighting on the site already?
There is, there is a light about, on the peak of the building on the east side of it. You can put, there is some lighting, well, it's wired underneath where the old bus stop was. And as far as anywhere else, I'm not aware of it. So, well, actually, there is one other light that in the front of 380 Main, like, um, the southern side there, there is a spotlight on the building. I believe Old Sturbridge have put it in, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I guess Jean, I mean, going by there, I never recall it being particularly dark, but I just wondered if we do have information on, is the current level of lighting on the site sufficient?
No, I can't really remember it ever being really dark when I go by there in the evening going home. But I think what we could probably do is when Lynn's ready to open, we could evaluate what it looks like some evening. You know, we could, and if she needs to add additional lighting. As long as the, kind of that shelter is wired, maybe an electrician could be able to connect to that to add. I'm also wondering if there's a telephone pole in close proximity because I know that she can work with National Grid to get a light put on that would direct onto her property as well. But I can't really recall it being that dark when I go by. I'm going to be looking tonight when I drive by there now. But I know there are lights on the building and over where the patrons would walk up to receive their ice cream. There's spotlights on that end of the building there as well.
Right.
So can you just put a condition Jean, that if you feel that.
Charlie, I'm sorry.
She could agree, she'll agree to add it if need be. Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Good night. Good.
Thank you.
Charlie, can I also, Charlie, I'm also, I'm looking at Google Maps right now and as Jean said, there's a street light or a utility pole just in front of the parking lot along Route 20. It already appears to have a floodlight, but to Russ's point, it's pointing down at about a 45 toward the existing parking area. So I would imagine the applicant could work with the utility company to activate that light if it's not currently illuminated.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a good idea, thank you Jane.
Yes, thank you.
Jane? Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I think we have.
Charlie, I just have one question. As Sue raised earlier, dumpsters on the other property, I was curious what your trash removal and storage situation would be?
Um, well, I would probably put a dumpster across from where there's like 13, 14, and 15. Right in that area there. As long as, you know, the trucks, you know, can get at it properly.
So Lynn, if you put it in.
Yeah, as long as it's.
You'll have to screen that pretty close to the road there.
You'll have, I'll have to what?
You'll have to screen the dumpster, it's pretty close to the road there. And then it may block the visibility pulling out of there, we'll have to look at that.
Okay. Well, you're not, okay, I see what you're saying. Yep.
Maybe near the old restrooms.
Yeah, that might be a better spot.
Better location.
I would like.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear anything that you said.
Oh, Lynn, I was, maybe by the old rest, the former restrooms would be a better location for the dumpster and then you could do a screened enclosure over there.
Right, well, there is a fenced-in area right there now, so, yeah, I could work with that.
Okay. Does that work for the board?
It does, thank you.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Okay, any other questions or comments on it? If not, Sue, how do you vote? And we did change the motion to include the stipulation on the lights. So, okay, so Sue, you vote, yeah, good.
I don't think anyone made a motion, Charlie.
Oh, I thought we did, okay. Let's have a motion then.
Okay, I'll make a motion to include the lighting that Russ spoke of as far as the parking lot and spotlight.
And then do you want to add that the dumpster shall be screened? Sorry Charlie.
And the dumpster shall be screened?
And the motion will start with what you suggested Jean and then add this other.
Okay.
Okay.
Second, we have a second then, we have a second then? A second Russell? Okay, great, thank you. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yep?
Yes.
Russ?
Yeah.
And I vote yes, very good, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you.
Good luck Lynn.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, the next request is for a waiver of site plan at 559 Main Street Altruis Brewing. We've got the pitch written already.
We do have Nancy from Bixby with us this evening. And this was another similar situation during COVID and trying to find a way to keep in operation and deal with all the COVID restrictions. She created a beer garden outside, you can see it in the photograph here. And during the summer months, she had food trucks and was able to prepare food inside and serve that as well. So since this was temporary, it needs to be made permanent if she would wish to continue to use this, and she does. I think we'll see this with most establishments now that, you know, there's going to be a real desire for outdoor seating. So she's proposing to use this on a permanent seasonal basis. Her maximum seating allowed on the premises with her original permit is 105. And so she has agreed, similar to Sawdust, that at any one time she will have no more than 105 seats between the indoor and the outdoor. Also, it should be noted that where the tables are sitting on the ground, she really would like to establish a deck under this. However, the price of materials right now is really cost prohibitive. So when the budget does allow and the material prices come down, they will install a deck. So the tables will actually be set on a decking system. So I would recommend that the board grant the waiver of site plan to allow the outdoor seating in the beer garden. outdoor seating in the beer garden to be used as permanent seasonal seating, with the condition that no more than 105 seats be used at any one time on the premises. And Nancy is here, if the board has any questions for her.
All right. Thank you, Jean. Does anyone have any questions regarding this proposal?
Charlie, I've got one question.
Go ahead.
Operating vehicles from pedestrians. Sue made a good point about the same item at the other application. I'm just curious, this has been operating for a whole year. I know that the parking generally isn't near this location in this corner, especially with that recessed loading dock right next to it. Have there been any incidents in the last year? Nancy, I'm sorry. I think you're muted.
Can I unmute her?
Unmuted.
There she is.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, good.
Okay, I'm sorry. I had dialed in from my phone, so I unmuted my phone, thinking that was gonna work, but it didn't. So no, we have not experienced any issues at all. Very rarely do we see any cars even drive that far. The parking is on the other side. It's before you get to this area. And there is a street, if you're facing that entrance, there's a small street that goes over to the right, but it's very rarely used. It's in very bad condition, and it's very narrow. So it's rare that we ever see any cars going that way anyway. And even if they did, there, we've never had any problems with them even being in front of our entrance at all.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I believe when I was watching the last meeting at home here, you brought up about the selectmen with, they're gonna have to get, all these establishments have to modify their liquor license, correct?
They do. That's correct.
At some point?
Yes. So what happened during COVID for, and still, right now, we're operating under the emergency order. So the governor gave boards of selectmen the ability to change the premise for the alcohol licenses just by going to the board of selectmen and not having to go to the ABCC. So Nancy and Pete were two of the first that wanted to be proactive and make this permanent, and apply to the planning board, the ABCC, and the board of selectmen to get this made permanent. We've heard some scuttle that maybe there would be some changes coming down the line that would give the board of selectmen the ability to grant this on a seasonal basis. But this has really worked out, been a very good business model for Altruist in allowing them to stay open, so they really don't want to wait and take the chance that the emergency order will expire. So she's making her necessary applications now in advance.
Very good. Anyone else? If not, can we have a motion then to grant this waiver of site plan approval?
I'll move, Russell.
Second, Dane.
Thank you, Dane. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night now. Okay. Jean, do you want to finish up on your update?
Yes, so just a couple of things. So far from May 11th, we don't have any applications. I'll leave it kind of on the schedule in case we, any A and Rs or anything come in, but we'll keep you posted on that. On May 25th, we have the continuation of the public hearing for Fisk Hill East, and I just spoke with the applicant today, because I was trying to figure out the timing for Noble Energy's continuation, and it looks like they're going to need another extension. So I'll be recommending that we continue that until June 8. And I've also, they've submitted a letter today also agreeing to an extension of time for the board to act on the application. They're still trying to work with DOT, and they're still trying to work out the conservation issues. So the only last two things I have is I went to the finance committee last week for all of our proposed zoning amendments, and those were all approved, supported unanimously, each one. And then I met with the board of selectmen last night, again, with the zoning amendments, and there were three members present, and they were unanimous votes to support all of the proposed amendments. So it looks like we're in good shape for the town meeting, and that's all I have.
Very good. Great. Well, thank you very much. Next, we have old or new business? Sue, do you have any old or new business?
No.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
Nope, I don't have any.
Hey, Dane?
I just have a question kind of towards Russ, who mentioned using gray water at the transit building, which I thought was a good comment, but I thought I heard that there was a water shortage. I know it's a good idea to minimize water, but isn't the town of Sturbridge, is there a water issue that I'm not aware of?
Well, we have, we have water.
Any difference from any other community?
Okay, that's what I, I definitely agree with them.
And the other thing, you know, one thing that came up when we did the municipal vulnerability study, it turns out that up until recently, they weren't really using that water system over there at the school. And we brought it up to their attention that they needed to, you know, take another look at that, see what the issue really was. And I think the last conversation we had was that they were gonna review it again and see what the problem really was, because they really hadn't been using that rainwater system for a while, I understand. We'll try to follow up with them and see what's going on with that.
Is that something Robin would look into?
Well, if they ask her to, I guess, generally, she doesn't really get involved with the, with the schools, but I mean, certainly, we can look into it. Okay, Dane, you're all set then. Mike, do you have any old or new business?
None, Charlie, no.
Okay. Jeff?
Nothing.
And Russ?
Nope, what's that?
Okay, great. And I don't have anything else. So with that, if we have a motion then to adjourn?
I'll move, Russell.
Okay, Sue? Sue?
Thank you, Sue. Sue, how do you vote? Yeah. Okay.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks. You too.
Have a good night. Good evening, everyone.